As long as he's okay, that's all that matters.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I'm gonna open the meeting at four oh six. I'm gonna get on with it.
I'd like to record a little.
Yeah, if you had one, I can stop it, but if it's good, I would. Please be informed that the board's recording clerk has a recording device for her record keeping. Anyone else want to record the meeting?
I would, yes.
And Mr. Kent will be doing so. Those of you who care to sign the attendance sheet, David, if you would.
Please.
Thank you. We will go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining specifically for full-time police, full-time fire, and call firefighters. Since it would be an executive session, since an opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on the beginning bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares, and the board will not return to public session. Any citizens' questions or comments? David, you're up. Anybody?
I'm all here.
Okay. Janine and I just asked for citizens' questions or comments. Do you have any at this point?
No, this time.
Okay. So we'll move to new business. Item number one. Kelly, I'm gonna turn it over to you so you can tell us about your continued discussion of fiscal year 2019 budget process.
Thank you. Really, just as a way to touch base and to keep everyone moving, or at least to show you that we're moving in the right direction, just as a quick update, wanted to let everyone know what you probably already know from my last report at the last meeting is that the fiscal year 2019 budget requests have officially been transmitted to the FinCom for their review. I'm aware that they're setting up meetings now to meet individually liaisons. Liaisons will be meeting with specific departments to ask them questions about their budget submittals. They'll also, they're also scheduling time during a regular duly posted meeting that they would basically have the opportunity to meet with different departments. They're gonna invite departments and boards to that meeting so that they can involve them in a larger discussion with the entire FinCom as opposed to just one liaison. So those meetings will be held in late January and throughout February. We'll be working with the FinCom chair in order to make sure that those get scheduled appropriately. But really, at this point, we have really just begun our initial review of the numbers as they stand. We've segregated, we, meaning the financial management team and our town accountant, under the direction of the FinCom, has segregated certain expenses depending on the guidelines of the FinCom. The FinCom stated that there would be zero percent for other, that that would be level funded. Anything that was requested that was more than zero percent of other was segregated onto a separate worksheet and tallied. All of those pieces of information have been included on the town's website under the finance committee website. We're also working to get those added to the town accountant's website as well. But they are posted, they have been online. And as another step in the process, at the beginning, at this early stage of the process, we're really beginning the deliberative process by which the FinCom will review the requests, get a clear understanding of any questions that they have or needs of the departments. So it's very early in the process, but as the Board of Selectmen had suggested, we have scheduled a budget forum, and I have a draft flyer here that I just need to make a couple of minor edits to, but I wanted to share with you. We, as you know, have a budget forum scheduled for Wednesday, January 24th.
At seven?
That's at seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Just to be clear, seven thirty. There was going back and forth between whether or not it should be at seven or seven thirty, and I believe that...
That's all.
Here you go. So seven thirty was the time that was decided to allow the most participation at a later time. That will be in the cafeteria at the Proctor School. I have been working with the chairman of the FinCom and our moderator and Marcus, representative of the board, to basically walk through and talk about logistics and how we want to, to, you know, present that information. It's going to be posted as a joint meeting, just to be on the safe side with regard to open meeting law. It will be posted as a joint meeting of the FinCom and Board of Selectmen. However, the idea behind it is to provide a forum for a kickoff of the actual budget review process, to help everyone to understand sort of who's doing what, whose role it is to do what, and to give a general idea. And we'll have some speakers to speak to the specific needs and challenges that were presented with this year and most years in general, but particularly this year. And so we hope that we will be, and we'll be soliciting questions in writing. Today, I'll get this posted on the website. We'll be sending out emails to folks. We want to compile a list of written questions that the moderator, so I can collect those and we can have an opportunity to look at those and to provide adequate information to the extent possible during the session. So we're really just talking about logistics. We've never really done this before that I'm aware of, at least not in Toffield, I mean. We've done it in other communities. And really, I think it's an opportunity for us, and as the board has reflected in the past, to really allow the opportunity for people to ask a question, to express their comments, but also to be, allow the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen and other members of the public to really outline, you know, what the process is, where people will have the ability to participate in the process as we move on from here leading up to town meeting. So that's just a quick update. I'll be meeting with those folks again tomorrow, tomorrow around five thirty, just to sort of walk through any final logistics. I don't think we've got everything scheduled to be on the podium to speak a little bit about the challenges. We have the superintendent for the tri-town schools, Superintendent Morrison will be there, and he has stated that he'll have the chairman of the school committee there with him as well, in addition perhaps to all their school committee members, but also Steve Greenberg will be available. And then Masco superintendent, Kevin Lyons, has said that he will be there in attendance, so that will be great. So they'll be one of the two. And then the police chief and the fire chief have offered to say some remarks, really just to talk about, you know, the challenges of what we're looking at right now in terms of service levels, how we meet those levels, and how we best meet the needs of the town given the limited resources available. So we're really trying to set the stage for a process that can be more deliberative and civil and proactive. So we're hoping that we can get everybody off on the right foot by allowing them the opportunity to hear from some of the key public safety and educational leaders of the community and to get a sense of really how difficult it is to be able to budget for the needs of the community, given the limited resources and the limited ability that the town has to raise revenue within the constraints of the option they have. So we're hoping to have a good dialogue to begin with the session, so.
Yeah, I have a question. This actually is not directly about the process, and it applies not only to this forum but also to town meeting. And when I moved to town for quite a few years after I first was here at the turn of the millennium, there was babysitting at the school for parents to be able to come and participate, at least until kids' bedtimes or extended bedtimes. And I don't know what happened to that, why that stopped, but I've had, when I've talked about this and had people calling and asking me about it and so on, one of the big things as well, it's a school night, I'm not gonna be able to go, I've got kids. And I realize people need to sort of plan in advance, but it would seem to me that we would be serving the town if we could find some way to kid coverage. I don't know what was done before, whether somebody underwrote.
I can tell you, because I was on the school.
You were? What's the story?
It was done by the parents.
Was?
I wouldn't say PTO, and I don't know if it was officially the PTO.
Yep.
But it was essentially the PTO.
Okay.
It was the elementary school parents who organized it, volunteered. It was a wonderful thing.
Oh, yeah.
I agree with that. It wasn't done centrally, at least when I was in school.
That's fine. I don't have any problem with how, and maybe I can reach out and see whether somebody wants to volunteer to do that. I just think that that adds a real quality to allowing people to come, and particularly because the town budget and all the schools tend to come before nine o'clock, depending on how long they go, because it's Articles Three, Five, and Six for the three schools. So it gives an opportunity for parents to at least listen and hear what's going on, and I frankly think extends people's awareness of what's going on in town as opposed to it being very unreal if you're not in the room, so.
Not surprising, at least in that generation, it started when there was a big, I don't remember which issue, but a big elementary school issue, kind of, and it was.
Right. But it was a good one, and I would say that would be something that would be really good if we could find a way to do again. I know a lot of parents would have to leave by nine or ten anyway, but I think it would be a way of engaging some people more.
Well, it's been debated for a number of years, and there are a lot of people that put a lot of thought into trying to figure out a way. Saturday meetings have been suggested so that they don't have school issues, but I hear back from some of those folks, "Yeah, but I got kids in sports programs, so I can't do that either." So, you know, it behooves us to continue to work toward.
Right.
Trying to help those folks that can't get there.
And I seem to remember seeing typically as many as, what, thirty or forty kids? Janine, you might remember how many were there. There were enough that it was a representation of parents at least, and those that could find a way to work it out, I thought benefited from being able to be there.
You addressed it, so I would ask the chair if I could just offer.
Yes, Jan.
So one of the challenges that we ran into when I was on the school committee was a quarry. Because if the town is in any way responsible for it, of course, you have to quarry the people.
I got you.
So that's a challenge. If it is truly the unofficial, well, not even a TESPO, but if it's an unofficial coalition of parents that are doing it, then you have some more freedom. But even so, timing is still a problem. If the, if it were to be suggested from the Board of Selectmen or other leadership at meetings, listen, plan ahead, talk to your friends in Foxford, swap out babysitting. You go to their house on Foxford's night, and they come to your house on Toffield's night, because that's really the easiest way to make it work. Not someone central, my father-in-law came up from Dedham. That's how we made it work. He didn't have a conflict. But, you know, that kind of coaching in January may help. But, so I think all options are great too, but the logistics of the quarry and child safety is a real hurdle.
Yep. I appreciate that. Thank you. I didn't want to belabor the point, but I thought it's something we should at least in front of us and now see that it would be done.
And I can make a point of starting talking about this on camera on a regular basis to get people's mindset to that idea.
Thank you, Jan.
Housekeeping for a second. We normally would have these lights on. Is there a problem with these lights or something that I don't know?
Janine, click that switch right there behind you.
Oh, we're not gonna be in the dark. Hey, you're a liar. Thank you. You're the housekeeper.
They were trying to make it more romantic.
You started with candlestick before you arrived.
Let me put it out.
It was a fire hat.
And then Jen came in.
A fire, yeah.
There's a mindfulness youth group at Masco that, one of the girls that runs that lives in town, and this is right up her alley, the kids are all CPR trained, first aid trained. And I just showed her a quick email, and then maybe she could be in, that would be something that would be great. That's exact, she tried to help link kids with public service for their public community service.
Give it a shot, see what we can.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
I can tell you, I would not want to be in a room with twenty or forty kids babysitting. I'll leave that to a bunch of other folks instead of me.
The one comment on this is it could be for two nights too, if the meeting goes for two nights. But importantly, we would like to think that everyone can stay through the entire meeting, whether it's for something about the schools or something about a truck to replace one that was torn out, or whatever it might happen to be. We really would like to think that everyone would be able to participate, not just in one little thing that they happen to be interested in. But it really affects the entire town, so I think the encouragement is to say, you know, we would hope that people would be able to stay. And maybe that feeds back to something that says, well, there's nothing in our guides that say we have to stop at a certain time, but maybe we'll get some feedback from people saying, "Well, if we could stop at ten thirty and have two nights is better than going until eleven thirty," or something like that. It's all good discussion.
Thank you, Jen.
Could I just clarify one real quick thing on the FinCom and their having departments come in? Actually, Monday, this Monday, the first departments will come in to the FinCom to do some presentation. At least one of them I know is scheduled for this Monday.
Can I go one step back just for a minute?
Yes.
And I apologize if I just missed them, having trouble getting my hands around this. Not the budget forum, the process. So certain department heads under the Selectmen came in to see us.
Correct.
Yeah, are we done with that? Anyone that wanted to came?
Correct.
Okay. Then, then there's a component of the town budget that's under the Select, right? That's viewed as under the Select.
Yes.
Okay. And it's built from that and other departments that are under us.
Yes.
So what happened, so my word, but like a composite was made of that the last couple of years. And one of the benefits of the composite was that we presented, and it was accepted, that, you know, if it's under the Select, at least in the smaller.
The non-facized, the departmental budgets.
That, and it came under budget, that that would be presented as acceptable ultimately up to the FinCom and town meeting. But I don't know what happened to that step.
You're right.
Okay.
Okay, let me do that as an action item. I will get that prepared with the town accountant tomorrow so we can have that. So we would have maybe a couple of pieces. One is all the departmental budgets that are under the authority of the Board of Selectmen will be under one umbrella. That would be one piece. The other piece would be those items that are more fixed costs, the unclassified, which would be health insurance. So technically, they sort of don't have a home, but they're still part of the budget process that we oversee and that we feed information into. So there might be two parts to that? Is that what you were?
Not the insurance.
Not the insurance.
That might be true, but that's not what I'm thinking of.
Okay, you're thinking departmental, Board of Selectmen.
It was more, it was something like, I know the town clerk, but the town clerk, the town accountants go down the row.
Let me.
As long, if one, the town clerk needed a little more money because it was an extra election, you know, I'm not talking about anything frivolous. But if someone else had a little, that was sort of looked at as a composite view as under guidance.
Correct. So let me work on that with the town accountant, and I'll get that to you tomorrow. I'll put it on the agenda for on Monday. The other piece of the puzzle that would need, probably need more guidance from the board, there's two pieces, but one are those items that are outside of the guidelines.
Yeah, that's the other part.
So that's that list of over guideline, but considered essential or.
Right.
Right, and what your recommendation would be.
Yeah, exactly.
If there's anything that needs a vote.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying.
That will help us too. So there's three areas. There's BOS, departmental budgets.
And it's really within that.
Yeah, yeah.
Or if anything, it's over guidelines, and whether this board selects the necessity of that. Agreed with that.
Yeah. And then the final piece to that, which I've been working on, and is the capital budget piece. And I'm making significant progress, but I'm not ready to give a presentation on Monday's meeting. I will be ready for the next meeting to do a formal PowerPoint presentation. The reason, there's a couple of loose ends, and those we're getting quotes for. And those are things, to give you an example of, we have been talking about document retention management. There's a technology where we could have someone come into the building, so before we, so to look at, if we're consolidating, let's say, I'll give you an example, Conscom, Board of Health, and building inspections, they're all going to be in one central office in the new, when we move back to town hall. Right now, we have, every single one of those departments has its own set of files and orders. And so one of the projects that we had talked about was digitizing some of that information and making sure that we're not bringing three separate files of the same information. So we've been talking with a vendor, and we're still waiting for a quote, because I know that if we took the entire project of every single file cabinet, that would be an enormous cost, and we're not.
Is it digitizing by scanning, or is it something like that?
Yes. Yes. And so what we're trying to do is to get a big, we're trying to get a picture of what the actual cost will be and how we can segregate key components like, such as the land use piece, to see if we can carve out a piece of the project and maybe start there, because I think that we would have the best impact with taking those three departments, and because a lot of their plans in general might have a lot of overlap. So we're waiting, as we speak, for a quote from them. And so I think that that would be one item that should be on the capital list, and they just don't have all the information. The other piece, of course, now is the truck that's up in smoke, literally.
That's already on the warrant.
Is that the front-end loader with the plow? There is one on there, that's why I'm wondering.
That's a four-peat.
Yeah. There was, there's been one on there for two years. So anyway, my point though is that I am getting all the information that we need. I've already drafted up sample warrant articles. I just am not ready to do a PowerPoint like I had hoped. The other thing I'd like to put into that PowerPoint is really a look back. So for the past four years, we've been putting what we call the facilities maintenance fund. We've been setting aside money during town meeting for that fund, and what that's helped us to do is to not have to call a special town meeting every time something breaks and we don't have funding for it. So there's been a lot of progress over the past four years. We are collecting pictures of projects that have been accomplished with that funding source, because we will be recommending that we do put some funding aside for that specific purpose again this year. And so what I'd like to do is to show the board, you know, really what's been accomplished with that, so that we can build on that success and try to figure out what's the right number that we should be setting aside for that facilities maintenance fund. And so I'm hoping that, not the next meeting, but the following meeting, and I don't have the date of that specifically, we can find that out, but that we can use that as an opportunity to do a full capital budget session. The other piece that might be missing from that right now is that our financial advisor will be coming into town hall next week and meeting with the financial management team to talk about the long-term, the short and long-term debt picture, how that all fits together, what we have on paper versus what the actual needs will be with relation to the water treatment plant, and the timing of that project, the timing of the MSBA project. So what I'm hoping to do is by the next date of the next board meeting, is to have a really comprehensive discussion about where we are, where we've come from, and where we intend to go with the five-year capital plan as we move forward. And then the key piece to that that folds right into the budget discussion is what does that FY19 budget, capital budget, look like? What does it consist of? And what are the options and choices that are available to us to determine, you know, what should go on the warrant, what should be in the capital allocation, what might need to be a separate warrant article? So there's a lot of moving parts with that, and so I just wanted to let you know that, while I understand that that is a, that's a component of the warrant in the budget process, but we're moving forward and collecting a lot of information so we can have a really good thorough discussion about capital, what it looks like, and also the funding mechanisms and the long-term debt picture of that. So I'm making some progress. Unfortunately, won't be able to do it for Monday, but was there any, oh, and the most important thing though is that we've been, we've received the $300,000 guideline from the FinCom, which I believe we are definitely going to be able to make that work. The question is, you might not be able to fit everything in the pot, and that's where the decisions have to come in. What's the priority? What goes above that 300? What is more, you know, what we'd be looking at that would be a separate warrant article? I can tell you that there's maybe one thing on there that would be eligible for borrowing, but I certainly, I won't be recommending that as a funding source. I think that our free cash number this year affords us the luxury of a deliberation about the merits of using free cash for a certain expense that would otherwise be eligible for borrowing, and that is directly tied with that. The large capital equipment being $150,000 piece of equipment, the front-end loader with plow, and how that sort of all fits into the picture. But I think that we've got a very well-managed list of items that we can have a good conversation about. There's also a couple of items on the list that I think would easily qualify as MYA safety fund-related expenses. So to give you an example, two examples, police tasers. That's something that technically meets the definition of what we would call capital, something that would equal more than $5,000, has more than a year's useful lifespan. To me, that represents a safety-related expense that's going to mitigate our risk exposure and our risk management for the town by allowing our officers to use non-lethal force where necessary. So those tasers at six, at $1,500 equals $9,000. Now, technically, I can put it on that list. We could also have discussions with both the board and with the FinCom as to what, you know, if there's a more, if we prefer to have that as, you know, part of that MYA safety fund during the special town meeting. So that's sort of a policy decision. It's a small item, but it's safety-related, and I want to try to get ahead of those discussions early on in the process rather than waiting till later on. Another example is the fire department turnout gear. So last year, if you recall, it was on the capital list. We suggested that there would be a three-year, a three-year expense to purchase all-new turnout gear that would be compliant, fully compliant. We were able to segregate the total costs, so rather than spend 200 grand at once, we figured out a way that we could spend maybe 40, 50,000 a year for three years. We were also applying for a $100,000 grant. Fortunately, the $100,000 grant didn't come through, so now we're faced with how do we get everybody with, you know, the gear that we intend to buy? And so I would be recommending that we would set aside $40,000 from either the capital allocation or from our MYA safety fund, that being the turnovers or the excess appropriations from this year's budget, based on the safety, the credits that we receive from MYA, the credits that we receive for attending training, when we attend training at the MMA conference, we get credit. All of those credits come to us at the end of the year. We don't know what they are up in front. We'll have the announcement this weekend at the MMA conference about what they project those credits to be. We even get early pay credits. So between when we budget and when we actually know what those credits are, there's excess appropriation at the end of the year that we would typically highlight as a funding source for safety-related purchases. That would be one time, that would be related to safety and risk management. So the turnout gear and the tasers, to me, would be a very appropriate expense for that MYA safety fund. So these are some of the discussions that I, you know, anticipate we'll have, just to see where we want certain things to be and how we're going to allocate that funding level. So before I can finalize those things though, I need to really just get a little bit more time to pull those together for you, but I am fully committed to getting that capital piece out of the picture, so that as things, as we understand better what the school department budgets look like, Masco and any capital for Masco, that hopefully we'll have fully vetted our capital needs for FY19, and we'll have identified all the capital needs for FY20 through '23, and at least identify what they are, so that there won't be a surprise, so that this time next year, we'll have a sense of what does that number look like for next year. So anyway, that's the update for capital that's related to the budget discussion.
What is the range of MYA credits that you would expect? How much to how much? To put it in perspective.
We've gotten at least 20,000, possibly 40 or 50. Really depends.
Have we ever gotten 50, 40?
Well, it depends if you're counting some of the excess from health insurance and property liability. This year, we'll be probably say.
Excess from health insurance? That's a credit, what's that?
Well, if we, it just depends on what we have at the end of the year.
Well, oh, you're saying unexpended. Let me just understand.
Yeah.
Unexpended funds that were in the budget?
Correct.
Okay. No, without those, that's not a MYA credit in any way. The MYA credits themselves are more like about 15 to 20,000.
Yeah, they're about that. It depends what you count.
Judge, I just, Kelly, I just want to get in perspective, so I understand, so I understand what we're dealing with. So we have a guideline from the FinCom of $300,000, and we may be able to essentially extend that in our own thinking for capital of something like about another 15 or 20,000 in order of magnitude.
I'm not going to give a nu, I can't give a number right now. I don't have that information. I don't have that information right in front of me.
Okay.
It was a general question, I was trying to be responsive.
But it would seem that the tasers, based on my experience from Maya credits, would be able to be funded.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, the.
Perhaps not turnout gear.
But the turnout gear not, okay.
And maybe not.
So my suggestion is, and I, I know that what hasn't been involved making a decision as to how to apply those credits yet, but my feeling would be, yeah, the tasers make sense. That's something that, that we need to upgrade, the new tasers, to apply that and don't essentially spend time putting that in a, in the capital plan. Or you can put it in capital plan, but identify it as being funded that way.
Right.
But again, the important thing, keeping it to the 300,000, which is the guideline. Let me understand for a moment, Kelly, what you said about free cash and, and a truck? I, I didn't quite follow what you meant by free cash and a truck.
Well, free cash is a part of our budget picture. What our certified free cash is, is a part of that budget picture and that's part of the budget discussion and what happens with that in our policy, what you spend that on, what you can spend it on.
But that's what the FinCom, that's what the FinCom deals with and they kind of look at that.
They look at that.
When they put their whole thing together.
Right.
And their guidelines are based in part on that. In other words, the 300,000 for capital is based on what they know, knew at the time as free cash, it was announced.
Yeah.
So I, I don't see how free cash specifically, it, it's already been built into the thinking, how it.
We didn't get a certified free cash until after. I mean, that was, or maybe we did, but my point is that in the past, we get a certain amount of free cash that goes into the budget projection. This year we have more free cash than we have in the past. And so that provides an opportunity to make decisions about how you're going to pay for the larger capital items such as $150,000 for a truck. We could lease, we could borrow, we could pay outright. All I'm stating is that free cash in the budget makeup for this year with free cash policy as you buy one time items, you know, if you want to borrow for a truck, the state allows you to. What I'm suggesting is that we have more tools in the tool chest to discuss needs and appropriate revenue sources. And free cash is one of those items that the FinCom will be discussing, as will we with the financial management team.
But the guidelines from the FinCom, again, assume that that's what we're dealing with and no more from capital beyond that. I think that's the way the FinCom thinks about it. That's the way I've always thought about it when they say that. So I think it's a little concerning that we're thinking about, but there's some other. The use of the free cash could of course be used to pay down some of what would otherwise be debt that we're going into, correct?
That's the same thing as paying for something.
And we found some pay downs are right.
That's exactly the same thing as buying something out of extra unexpected free cash versus borrowing for it. So it's like paying it off before you would do the borrowing.
Right.
Or we're doing without something as a case study. Because in other words, if we think it's free, then we just kind of do it. But if we understand that it has a cost, then we have to be able to.
And we're going to have to get one at some time. If we could avoid borrowing by using an unexpected, I'll say windfall in a sense, then that would be a way of avoiding some borrowing that sooner or later will be necessary. And that in a sense would debt, that would reduce the overall debt load going forward. And that's the intention, I think, of looking at it this way, at least considering it as an option.
Right.
The difference being though, that a debt that you have is a given, you know, whereas it, you, you have to pay.
Right.
The, the other items you haven't done, you may feel you need them.
Right.
But they're not in the same category. And so it's very careful to, just very careful to say, here's no choice. We got to pay this and we help ourselves.
Right.
This, as much as it may hurt or whatever, and we need it, need it, is a decision factor. You can't make, what, once you know you have to do that debt, there's no decision.
Well, I think that's the conversation Kelly's talking about, but we don't have all the information on yet.
All she's talking about is the fact that she, she says that we've got extra free cash that we haven't had in the past. And, and if we can, if we have the debate and decide to use some of that free cash to buy things that are needed, that's all she's talking about. That's a debate that we'll have to take this.
The discussion about doing electronic documents essentially and going out to bid on that? And specifically, Kelly, you mentioned Board of Health, Concom and inspections as being part of it. In the bid that we went out for, have we explained that we would want that to integrate with our existing applications in those three departments, namely the permitting? Because that's, that's where those documents would come together. It's, it's not simply a matter of kind of grabbing documents, it's how you can apply that to the existing application. So is that part of the bid?
We haven't bid anything, we're just looking for a quote right now so we know the scope.
That's what I mean when you went out for quote.
Well, it's one quote, it's not a bid because we don't know, we haven't been able to formulate a scope of service yet. And I also want to make sure that we have some idea of the relative expense compared to the project we need. So this is really the first opportunity we've had to meet with a vendor to give us some idea of what we're up against so that we can make some decisions from here.
Yeah, I was going to say, the other thing is that.
We've got a ways to go.
Yeah, all right. I told you we were going out, if you're getting a quote, then usually you say to do this, this, this and this. And I, I didn't understand.
There is no respect written.
But nevermind, nevermind.
Ninety-nine percent of the cost is going to be in the physical management of the paper documents and going through the scanner and all that kind of stuff. One percent, if that, would be in selecting what format. And I'm sure they offer formats that work effectively with all the commercially available types of municipal management software. So I think that the choice of format isn't going to be a cost swing at all, although it must be in a final, a final RFP of course, but a general sense of what something would cost, very helpful because that will be consistent no matter which. They've still got to feed the paper through the scanner and store the result.
I, I guess I wasn't clear, John. Clearly the format's up, we have to come up with it.
Yeah.
That's, I'm sure that they'll handle any other formats. And maybe the different formats for different items.
It's not like.
Let me just, the issue is not the format. The issue is integration with our existing applications. And as you know, software integration can sometimes be a fairly big deal. But it's in integrating it that you can get efficiencies in the operation instead of having a thing that's done here and then a thing that's done here. When somebody wants to do something over the next five or 10 years, they first do it here and then do it there. I'm asking about what we're doing, what we're thinking about to integrate existing applications we have with whatever other things we do.
Yeah, and let me make a distinction. Let me make a distinction between E-Docs as I think of them and what these would be as electronic scans. E-Docs are in formats like Word or Pages or whatever form you want, and that does have to work specifically with software. When you have scans, electronic scans, they are, if you will, sort of dead, they're just a collection of bits and they only represent a visual representation, sorry, a visual representation. And software doesn't, all software cares about is we can call it PNG, JPG, you know, whatever it is MPG, whatever we need and we can bring it up. I think it's not the issue.
You and I talked about this, because I think I can make, I can explain some stuff.
I think you're being premature. I think she's had one meeting with these folks.
Yeah.
She's a long way away from.
Okay. One last thing, Kelly, you, you mentioned getting data up on the website and you mentioned the accountants and you mentioned the FinCom. And there was a little discussion on this once before. We're going to put data perhaps in both places, some here, some there, but there's not going to be a reproduction of it in two places, right? If we have it, it's only going to be one place and in the other place, if we want to have access to that information will be via a link, right? We're not going to put the same documents up in two different places on the website, are we?
First of all, you have one storage place. You can have any number of ports to access them, but you store it in only one place.
Is that agreed?
Well, that's the way they do it.
That's the question.
Yeah, you don't make two copies.
I don't know, I don't know. I'm just asking.
No, it wouldn't make sense to do that.
It doesn't. That's why I just want to make sure that that's the case.
Well, we don't have an IT director to ask, so we'll do it whatever way we need to, is my response to that.
They'll give you all the.
I think John's suggestion is.
I, I think we're getting into the weeds here.
What we want to do.
Yeah, yeah, I realize. I'll talk technical with you later.
Our most, our most urgent need is to get information to the people who are requesting it so that they have as few links as possible to get there. If they're, I'm not an IT director, I can't.
Okay, in that regard.
I don't.
What, what will we get up within the next few days? So I've seen some of the emails. Will we have the submitted budgets up?
So I'll be on there.
It is up, thank you. Okay.
It's been up there.
Oh, it has?
People are looking in the wrong place.
So the emails, okay, we, they, they were unable to find them for whatever reason, they didn't know. And we straightened that out and people are able to find them? Thank you.
And it, it related, but I want to make the separate discussion point. This isn't about if we have extra Maya money or whatever.
Yeah.
I know it sounds silly to say, but historically, this has been one of the places of confusion for the department level folks that, that, we talked about this in another context a few years ago. There's a $300,000 capital guideline by the FinCom and then you hear, oh, oh, yeah, but this is a warrant article. Yeah, like the people have had that confusion for decades. So just, so.
They're all warrant articles, so certain.
It doesn't matter, but it, it just matters where the money comes from.
So, so the, so the policy discussion is, is the 300,000 a line in the sand and you can't talk about anything above that? Or is the 300,000 the number by which I make a recommendation, but I also give other options that fell outside and then I let there be a policy discussion in a deliberative process that says.
It's a guy, I mean, I think that.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
I think that to me is a clear.
And I don't want to be presumptuous that I'm going spending, doing all the spending.
You may or may not have come across the approach that the elementary schools use.
Yeah, yeah.
To me, it's something, so.
Which you don't get.
They've color coded things.
Yeah.
They use color bands, not as in a musical band, but only. So to me, it would be helpful, something like that. So in black and white, well, being simplistic.
Right, I agree.
Adds up to, yeah, adds up to 300,000.
Yeah.
And then others by your view of priority.
Right.
But they should be discussed, they can be rejected, but they should be discussed.
Well, they'll come to us, that's right. And the FinCom.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and then ultimately to town meeting. Town meeting gets to vote, so that's.
But, but they only get to vote what's on the warrant is, is the issue in part. And so it's, as you say, here's the 300,000, these are the things that are most recommended, the high, the highest priority. And then this is the things you don't get. If we get more money, you can get this, you can get this, you can get this. And it's our responsibility to not just throw everything up on the wall and say, let's see what sticks, but rather than say, these are the most, the highest priority and those will go on the warrant. Plus, if the FinCom agrees, we can fit these other two in because of some other reason that we're able to put them in.
It's, it's a screening process, the steps to a screening.
That's right.
But again, about debates, that, the selectmen decide what's on the warrant.
That's kind of what I was trying to say a few minutes ago. Thank you for clarifying.
Good segue to the next agenda item.
Okay. You ready to move on?
Yep.
All right. The next item is the annual town meeting warrant development process and schedule.
I have already begun. I've got some formatting suggestions from Selectmen Gant, so that was helpful and, but I've already started putting together a draft list for my own purposes, my own personal notes with respect to what was done last year, what has already, you know, it's a traditional annual article. I wanted to be sure that this group knew that with regard to the warrant preparation, that I'm going to be having periodic times when I can produce a draft document of some, of some kind so that we sort of put a timestamp on it and then you have enough time, as I reassured you, to leading up to the warrant process that you can take the document and review it and get feedback to me so that we don't leave certain changes to the last minute right before the warrant is being done. So we've got a pretty good handle on that. I wanted to let you know that the town clerk will be posting the annual special town meeting and election calendar. Nomination papers are going to be available on February 1st. And there are certain dates that she, and I think this is in your packet.
It is.
It also includes all of the folks who, all of the positions that are available and open for election this year. So that is going up. If it's not up there already, it will be, I'd be surprised if it wasn't up there already, but that will be publicized. So the warrant process, I mean, I don't really have too, too much except that there are a couple of logistical questions that have been brought to my attention that the board may want to discuss. And that is, one of the logistical questions is whether or not the location of town meeting should continue to be at the Proctor School. There's been a suggestion that we could be utilizing Masco as another option. And I'm not quite sure what you intend to or how you would like to have a conversation. It's a piece of correspondence at this point and I'm not quite sure if that is a topic that, I don't know how you would like to have that discussion or if it's warranted in talking about the merits of that. I, I remember when I first got to top field and uttering those words four years ago, why don't they have the town meeting at Masco anyway? Because the bylaw says you can have it at Masco. And then they looked at me with sheer disgust, like, oh, here comes the new, the new kid in town telling us we have town meeting. You know, I mean, it's, it's an option. I've never heard any discussions otherwise except that last year, I do know that we had an overflow situation. It was a really hot day, we had to bring in some water, had some audio issues in the other room. I think, you know, a lot of those might be resolved and with a little maybe additional preparation. But anyway, for, as far as I know and as far as I'm working with, on my draft warrant, it states that the, the meeting will be at the Proctor School Gymnasium. But if there's any discussion about an alternate location, I think earlier is better to have that discussion. But I just wanted to bring up that logistical question or issue or that correspondence with you in case there is, you know, there's a little board to have a more formal discussion. I'm only bringing it up here because we are talking about the annual warrant, meeting warrant.
Any comments or questions?
I certainly agree with Kelly that the sooner we make a decision, the better on something like this.
Without them.
Because there's a lot of pieces to, maybe not big ones, but you do have to get it scheduled for one and then think through what the logistics will be because it's been a while since. Who haven't had one? We have, there's been other ones there, but anyway, the logistics to be dealt with, how the, how the cameras would be in place and how the people get notified for sure that that's where it is and have them know beforehand and how to check in and the town clerk will kind of all of that.
I have a question. What is the capacity of Proctor Gym is what, 400 something?
I don't, I don't remember. It's posted on the law notice. But I know we looked at it when, that last time.
Okay, and I guess the question is, is the new auditorium in the renovated town hall larger?
No.
No.
It is smaller?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So as I've said to some folks, it's more difficult going to Masco than it is doing a Proctor, no question. My concern is, and I've heard rumblings from some people who, you know, they get there a little late and it's a big day and they end up being in the back room, A, they're discouraged, they don't really feel they're, they're part of it. And there's an issue around engaging sort of in the ongoing exchange and the immediacy of being in the room and having to leave, come out, wait to be recognized and so on and so forth. So I think it bears having some conversation whether now is the time or not. This, if we're not going to end up with an auditorium that is bigger than the Proctor Gym, then maybe the question is one to be thought about on behalf of future meetings, not just this one.
I, my personal opinion is with all that's going to be going on at this time of year with warrant and budget and specific deadlines, I think it's going to be very difficult to change the location, arrange it all, notify everybody. change the location, arrange it all, notify everybody. I think it's, I think it's difficult to figure out how I, in my mind, how we can make it work for this particular meeting. Now, if we want to discuss it for ongoing sessions, we can do that, but try to do it this time, in my opinion, is, is almost flirty.
I think one of the other things too is that because Masco's already committed to a performance on the, first, there is a rehearsal, but that can be adjusted in time a bit. There is a performance already scheduled, tickets out and things, stuff like that, or not tickets out, but they've got it committed to for the second. So it would be doing it this year, if it went to a two-night, it would be an awkward situation of first night at Masco, and of course, nobody comes out in the quantity that they do for the second night, but it would be moving it on the second night, which I recognize would be a significant logistic hassle. So maybe it is something for the future as a way of making improvement. The other thing, you can try it for two or three years, and if it really doesn't work, then you go back, but it's just not a life-changing, never make it, you know, decision. Anyway.
Is there any procedural issue with making a decision on this at this meeting relative to what is or isn't posted on the agenda?
I would, I'm looking just for direction as to whether or not I should list it as an agenda item for a future meeting. So we don't necessarily have to do-
Well, I would be prepared to make a motion, but I don't want to cause problems. If it's beyond the agenda, then I can wait until Monday to make the motion.
I think that we may want to, we might be safer just to list it as an agenda item for Monday.
That's what I thought we were going to do.
I just wanted, before I did that, I wanted to get a sense of-
I just let you know that I will be prepared to make a motion to hold this year's town meeting at the Proctor School on Monday night.
The one thing I would say though is if there's anything, two things I can do, press collection at a meeting that directly affect the citizens, this is it. And I would say that if we had the time to next meeting, next public meeting announce that we are considering it and we'll take any inputs from citizens, listen to what the citizens say, and then at the following meeting finalize the decision. It's just that this is really very much a citizen issue. If citizens, as John said, oh, I didn't say the word, but I guess disenfranchised by sitting out in the back or something, I don't know. Anyway, I, getting input from citizens, I think, not, not from a couple, but from essentially the citizens overall who'll be coming, I think would be helpful.
Monday's agenda.
That's all I have. I'll wait out for an update on that. If there's any other questions.
Okay, I'll entertain a roll call vote to enter executive session to discuss police chief contract, or police contract, fire contract, and call firefighters.